The Board.
The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-three present.
Coram being present, unless everyone in the chambers and galleries is able to stand, then please rise for prayer. Giving all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Josh Lowey with Lethrop Engage and Rachel Smith with the Circuit Attorney's Office.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I'd like to have Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T as my honored guest.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce as my honored guest, Mr. Vernon Betts, who is a former sheriff of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, Mr. Perchey Green III of the Fire Department, St. Louis Fire Department. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Yeah, Alderman from the first.
Since the Alderman from the nineteenth is not here, I'd like to introduce Mr. Daryl Jones II, who is my husband's godchild and worked on my first campaign. I have a picture of him when he was about two or three years old.
Oh, man.
As a Tyus. He's Daryl Jones. He's also with the Urban League. He works for my, our former colleague, Michael McMillan.
Oh, excellent. You're welcome. Any further introductions? Any further? Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Martina Johnson, St. Louis Association Realtors.
Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, as we gather here on March 11th, Friday, with the onslaught of St. Patrick's Day coming on. The onslaught. Today is the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, favorite holiday, Johnny Appleseed Day. But most importantly, in 1955, on March 11th, the world lost the true king of baloney, Oscar Mayer. But we're happy to report that he is reincarnated and showing up across the street today at the Peabody. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval in minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the February 26 minutes.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second motion. Second by Alderman from the eleventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have from his honor the mayor, the following correspondence, dear members of the Board. I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the 1100 Washington Avenue Community Improvement District. The appointment of Ryan Schneider, a resident of Greenwood, Missouri, whose term will expire on July the 11th, 2018. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis. Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to 1100 Washington Avenue Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move to confirm the mayor's nomination.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. That's the extent of report of city officials. With dispens where lying items seven and eight, would anyone like to take any bills off of any environmental form or calendars? Alderman from the first, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to take Board Bill 135, Committee Substitute, off of the informal calendar and on to the third reading calendar, please.
Thank you, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Move Board Bill Number 135, Committee Substitute, to the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
We've dispensed where lying items nine through 12,
Board Bill, Board Bill 321, sponsored by Alderman Boyd. This was reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee. An ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Nathaniel Rivers Place and containing a severability clause. Following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill 300, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment. Authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not-to-see $5,514,521 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for 634 North Grand Redevelopment Project and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 306, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to Change the Zoning of Property from A Single Family Dwelling District to the J Industrial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District for properties on Manchester and Landham containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 307, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to Change the Zoning of Property from A Single Family Dwelling District and F Neighborhood Commercial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District for properties on Hampton and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 323, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, and it was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, an ordinance approving the petition of an owner of certain real property to establish Community Improvement District, establishing the 705 Olive Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispens where lying item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 280, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance repealing ordinance 69183 and making certain technical corrections, regulatory updates, and clarification to the firefighter's retirement plan to set forth in ordinance 69245, amended by ordinance 69353, as codified in Chapter 4.19 of the Revised Code. Board Bill 270, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance pertaining to parking within the Gerhart Lofts, building residential parking district, including residence of 3900 and 3914 Le Cleve, and containing definitions of penalty clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 271, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance pertaining to parking within the Buckingham Court Residential Parking District, revising ordinance 66386, authorizing the traffic and transportation administrator to designate the location restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the east side of North Kings Highway between the intersection of Kings Highway and Le Cleve. Board Bill 284, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on Wabba-Dah, 75 feet east of the West Curb line from Union Boulevard, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 320, sponsored by Alderman Behringer, an ordinance repealing ordinance 66922 pertaining to certain temporary street closings and enacting a new ordinance in lieu thereof, authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to close barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on McLawsland at Chippewa, Plainview at Jamison, Highview at Jamison, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 313, sponsored by Alderman Carter, an ordinance authorizing directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on North Point by blocking said traffic flow at Goodfellow and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 319, sponsored by Alderman Carter, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on Saloma by blocking said traffic flow at Woodstock and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 309, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Spencer and Green, an ordinance requiring certain votes taken by the Board of Alderman to be published online and containing a severability clause and an effective date. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Third reading consent.
Board Bill.
Alderman from the twenty-first, yes.
President, I move that we suspend the rules and move the following board bills to the perfection consent calendar. From the perfection consent calendar to the third reading consent calendar. Board Bills 280, Committee Substitute, Board Bill 270, Board Bill 271, Board Bill 284, Board Bill 320, Board Bill 313, Board Bill 319, and Board Bill 309 as amended.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills. Entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the seventh, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Howard, Alderman French. Twenty-seven aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-first. Madam Clerk, please sign the aforementioned bills, the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that we reconsider Board Bill 296.
Having voted on the prevailing side.
Yes.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to alert my colleagues that there is a floor substitute on everyone's desk. This was so much fun last week that couldn't resist giving it another go. All my colleagues can certainly vote in the affirmative on the motion to reconsider, and if they don't like the floor substitute, they can vote against the floor substitute. But we'd appreciate a chance to explain some of the changes. So, thank you.
Alderman from the seventeenth.
Yes, Mr. President, will the Alderman from the twenty-fourth yield?
Alderman from twenty-fourth will yield for questioning on the motion to reconsider.
Yes. Alderman, I was just curious. I don't consider myself pro-chicken or anti-chicken. I like to probably maintain the status quo just because the status quo is easier, and if I get a call five years from now from a neighbor who's mad about their neighbor, I can just say, you know, hey, you know, this was done years ago. But if we make a change, then I vote for it, and there's a problem, then I gotta go through all the explanation for that. My biggest concern, and I don't think it's going to impact many folks in the seventeenth ward, but I could see where it impacts folks in other wards. I don't think bills like this should be dealt with, you know, out in front of the full board. Have you got your votes? Did you call, do you have 15 votes for it? I don't mind reconsidering, but I don't want to sit through another two-hour debate on the full floor.
Sure. Well, I don't think it'll be two hours. I think I can summarize the changes pretty quickly.
Do you have your 15 votes? Did you call anybody up? And I just don't think we should be doing vote tallies out here for the sake, every time, doing trial balloons. Some of this stuff, I think, is better to work out. Taking up all of our time when you could go ahead and make a few phone calls to line up the votes and have these kind of off, you know, discussions, not on the full floor, but actually kind of working them out one-on-one, so that when it comes out here, we don't have what happened, you know, last week. And I'm just asking if you didn't, you can say yes or no. If you say yes, I got the 15 votes, I'm inclined to go ahead and support it. If you're saying you don't know, my inclination is to vote no and let you bring this back next, you know, three, you know, a month from now when we come back in, and then we can go ahead and you can line up your votes, and when you know you have them, we're ready to go then.
Sure. I talked to a number of people who voted no last week and a number of people who were not here last week. Are there 15 votes? I'm not 100% sure, but certainly made an effort to explain the changes to a number of people.
The reason I ask is I got a phone call. We were in a meeting earlier in the week, and I didn't know this was happening. I think it was Wednesday. We were in a meeting for a half an hour, just the two of us, and I didn't know this was happening. I got a call yesterday from one of my constituents asking me to support it, and I said, I didn't even know what she was talking about. And then I got an email from you last night, which made me wonder, are you talking to other people down here to incorporate their changes? And again, I wasn't particularly against it. I just didn't think that it was good policy to go ahead, and it was very clear in floor debate that there was a lot of people down here that were against it, and that not much communication has occurred. And I just want to make sure that before we go ahead and let this Pandora out of the box again down here, that we're not going to be here two hours from now debating this.
Sure. Well, I don't need two hours to summarize the changes, and the changes in the floor substitute were very much the questions and concerns that people had while we discussed it last week. So, it's definitely an attempt to listen to what people said, make those changes, and compromise on the bill.
All right, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we reconsider the vote for Board Bill Number 296. Any further discussion? Alderman from nineteen.
I was trying to read very fast while you all were talking, and I still don't see the permit part asking permission of the immediate neighbors. I see we took our emu, but, and we increased it, rather dropped the number of chickens to, I guess, eight. But I need to see that. So, I'd like to ask the sponsor from the 24th ward if he would yield.
Well, this is on just the motion to reconsider. Should we reconsider the vote for?
Okay, then I know how to vote. Then I know how to vote. Thank you.
If you have, Alderman, Alderman from the nineteenth, Alderman from the nineteenth, if you would like to still, you sure? Okay. All right. Alderman from the first.
And I guess I'm following Alderman from the nineteenth. So, on the motion to reconsider, which I have agreed that I would probably support the motion to reconsider, but I also didn't have time to read all this stuff. And so, is it appropriate, is my question, that he discuss on the motion to reconsider the changes that are made? Or do we have to wait? So, mine's is a procedural question, point of order.
Yeah. The way I see it is what's before us is the motion to reconsider.
And so, we won't discuss?
Yeah, the amendments, that isn't really before us right now.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, seconded by Alderman from the sixth, that we reconsider the vote for Board Bill Number 296. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer. I didn't hear you. Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed. Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Howard, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Thirteen aye votes, fourteen no votes.
By your vote, you failed to stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Third reading consent.
Board Bills. 286, 287, 288, 289, 291, 292, 293, 301, 302, 280 Committee Substitut-- oh, I'm sorry.
Three twelve.
Three twelve, three sixteen Committee Substitute, 236 as amended, 235, 275, 303, 315, 317, 209, 314 as amended, 318, 280 Committee Substitute, 270, 271, 284, 320, 313, 319, and 309 as amended.
Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Mr. President, I would respectfully ask that Board Bill 320 and Board Bill 309 be moved to the regular third reading and final passage calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill 320 and, I said, 309, move them to the regular perfection, regular third reading calendar. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Moore, Alderman Howard, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Cohen. Twenty-seven aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the eighteenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of regossements.
Board Bill three, Board Bill 135, I'm sorry, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance to vacate public surface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel on a portion of the 15-foot-wide East West Alley in City Block 5090, abutting 4540, 4542, 4900 through 4904, 4906 through 4908, and 4910 through 4912, Union and 4547, 4541, 4545, North Union, same being bounded by Union, Geraldine, Bercher, and Lilly.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President.
You recognize on third read and finally passes a Board Bill Number 135, Committee Substitute.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for a third reading and final passage of Board Bill 135, Committee Substitute.
Move by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in one, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the Board, this rode informal for a very long time, so I felt the need to explain a little bit. This is for a vacation of an alley, but it is also over in the Mark Twain neighborhood, right by the highway, and it will be a combination service station, which we don't need another one in North St. Louis. But it was already along with, though. The great part of it is it's also going to be a strip mall. I have some drawings that we've made, and I think several people have seen it. It's going to be a beautiful thing. We actually have been talking to somebody very famous in Kansas City about bringing barbecue to the neighborhood, and there are some other things that we're working on. And I know the Alderman from the twenty-seventh knows this. It's very hard. We share the neighborhood. It's very hard to get things up there because people have a preconceived notion of what it is. a preconceived notion of what it is, uh, but it's actually a wonderful neighborhood. Um, three former Alder- Alderpeople of the First Ward live there, actually, um, so I have, uh, a lot of predecessors that are First Ward residents, and, um, this is gonna be something great, and we had to wait to buy up all the land. We actually bought up all the land on Union between Burcher and, um, Lillian, and then, so that we would not disturb the neighborhood, we also bought up all the land on Geraldine to put berming and trees, and, um, we think it's gonna be a good project, and it's been, uh, hard fought, and, um, we had to work with the neighbors, made it something that they want, and so we have all the properties, uh, except for two properties. One is the church property across the street, who has already agreed to sell, and then we have a problem property, um, and the people are over in England that we're working with, but we have everything else, and we're actually working around that property and putting another alley in so that it doesn't, um, disturb them from using their alley, and I think this will be a good project, um, and I'd ask for a third reading and final passage of, of Board Bill 135 Committee Substitute.
All right, thank you. Uh, any further discussion, any further discussions? Been moved by Alderman from the first, seconded by Alderman from the fifth, uh, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 135 Committee Substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Howard. Twenty-six, I-votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion of the Alderman from the first and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 135 Committee Substitute. Also want to introduce Pastor Byrd, or Bishop Byrd. Thank you so much for joining us today. Let's give him a round of applause.
Board Bill, Board Bill 320 sponsored by Alderman Behringer, in ordinance repealing ordinance six-six-nine-two-two pertaining to certain temporary street closings and enacting a new ordinance in lieu thereof authorizing and directing the director's streets to close barricade otherwise impede the flow of traffic on McLausland at Chippewa, on Plainview at Jamison, on Highview at Jamison containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 320.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for a third reading and final passage of Board Bill 320.
Been moved by Alderman from the 16th, seconded by Alderman from the 17th. Alderman, any further discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, I didn't hear you, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Ald- Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Howard, Alderman French, Alderman French. Twenty-five, I-votes, one, no-votes.
By his, by your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the 16th and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 320.
Board Bill 309 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Spencer, and Green, in ordinance requiring certain votes taken by the Board of Aldermen to be published online containing a celibility clause and an effective date.
Alderman from the 24th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 309.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I move, we third read and final pass Board Bill 309 as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the 24th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, it's a very short bill. Uh, what, what this bill does is it requires that our third reading and, and final passage votes that we take here, um, go online on the city's website in a searchable format that is also linked to the text of the, the bill. So currently, we do publish votes online in the City Journal, but they are in a PDF, and they're very difficult to find for people to figure out when the vote happened, what the vote, what the bill number was. Um, it's kind of like look, looking for a needle in a haystack. So this would just add to the Board of Aldermen's, uh, the, the sort of lawmaking page on the city's website that already has the bill text, um, it already has which committee it's gone to, and already has, um, any, any amendments that have been added to the bill, and it would just add a database of votes there. Um, and, uh, the, the clerk, whose responsibility this would be, says we're already basically doing most of, of this stuff, um, and IT, ITSA says it's, it's not, uh, too much extra trouble to get this into a database, um, and this would begin with, uh, the next session, so votes moving forward, um, would be, would be archived, uh, there, online.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. May inquire the Alderman from the 24th, please?
Alderman from the 24th will yield to Alderman from the 11th.
Yes.
Alderman from the 11th, please proceed.
Gentlemen, this idea came from the same group that was for the appropriation of poultry and pullets from last week?
Uh, not, not really. Um, you know, this, this bill actually is something we discussed doing, uh, on more of an administrative level, going back a couple of years. It just hasn't come to fruition yet, um, so making it into an ordinance gets us over the finish line, um, and, and we'll get this, this stuff online.
May I ask who "we" is?
Um, what, what, read, read the transcript back to me. What, what did I say? Something we've, something we-
You said "we" discussed, and I just was wondering who "we" is. Uh, I, I know who the smaller "we" group is, and I'm not able to infiltrate that's missed, in my miss this morning, but you're saying "we," and I was just wondering who that is.
Yeah, I might have to stop using that word, aren't I? "We."
Not necessarily.
Um, it's, it's, it's something I have discussed. I mean, it's something I, I brought up at the, the caucus, actually, uh, I guess which would have been a year ago, um, and something that, um, I've, I've brought up in different forums, uh, in the past. So maybe instead of saying "we," I'll just say "me." But, um, this, this is really, it, it's not, I mean, the information is out there, but kind of the point is that a lot of the time, the most immediate record we have of, of a third reading and final passage vote is like a tweet that a reporter makes, or an image of notes that one of us make, or a reporter makes, and I just think we can do better. I mean, we are the only, I mean, we, we have the unique responsibility in the city of, of making laws, and we take votes on those, and they are part of the public record, and we can just do a better job, um, archiving those votes so they are available so that anybody can see what they were. Sometimes I forget how I voted on stuff, so, uh, for me, it'd be helpful just to know, uh, how I voted on something a, a year or two ago.
That, this gives, uh, uh, the clerk of the Board of Aldermen a pretty good homework assignment if we have a busy day here or not.
Not really, because we already, we already have, by law, we already have to put these things into the, uh, City Journal, so we're already documenting all of these votes. The, the yeas, the nays, presence, absence, that's already happening. It's just being, it's just going into the City Journal in one format that's hard to find. So we have all of the data, we have all the information. We're just going to also give it, um, to ITSA to incorporate into the city's website that does all the bill tracking, um, now. So, so certainly, we talked to the clerk, or I talked to the clerk, clerk talked to ITSA, um, this is not, uh, sure, it's another thing, but it's not particularly, uh, burdensome, because we're already doing most of this. And it's just the third reading, final passage votes. It's just that one vote, which is, of course, the last vote, uh, we take on something.
I, I just, I, I'm reading here, gentlemen, votes taken on bills listed collectively on the third reading consent calendar on the meeting agenda of the Board of Aldermen shall be noted as such. That means that we, uh, in effect broad-brush them and say they were third reading consent, and there is no, uh, roll call printed?
Correct, correct, yes. So, you know, I, I don't know exactly what that will look like in the database, but it, it's just so that it's clear that, you know, all these votes are unanimous, there, there's not an individual roll call on those votes.
How do you think I feel? I don't recognize a database, so.
You're pretty good, you're pretty good with the iPad. I, I've seen you. I don't, I don't, you're selling your social.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty good, all right. Um, okay, yeah, I, I don't know that I, you know, I don't vehemently oppose to the concept. I think a couple of things, if, if in fact we pass this this morning, and it looks like we're going to, but, uh, we would then, uh, this would have to be when we take a look at our rules, this would be an additional charge that the clerk of the Board of Aldermen probably should be dealt with in there also.
Well, they, I mean, it, it does specify that this will be a responsibility of, of the clerk in the bill, so.
I, I'm just saying we have responsibilities of the clerk in our rules, and we may wanna, when we visit those, embody this, is all I'm suggesting.
Sure, yeah. I, I don't, it may be that within those rules, we're already making the City Journal component a responsibility, and if we are, you know, we could add this, uh, very much in this, you know, using similar, uh, language.
Thank you. Thank you for the inquiry. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th, you recognize close.
Thank you. Um, I, I just think this is something that'll be useful for us, useful for residents, useful for voters, um, and will make it easier to find this info rather than, than digging for it, so I, I would, uh, renew my motion. Thank you.
It's been moved, the seconded, that we, third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 309. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Ald- Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Howard. Twenty-six, I-votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the 24th, and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 309.
As amended. That's the extent of our third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills. Two eighty-six, two eighty-seven, two eighty-eight, two eighty-nine, two ninety-one, two ninety-two, two ninety-three, three oh-one, three oh-two, three twelve, three sixteen committee substitute, two thirty-six as amended, two thirty-five, two seventy-five, three oh-three, three fifteen, three seventeen, two oh-nine, three fourteen as amended, three eighteen, one thirty-five committee substitute, two eighty committee substitute, two seventy, two seventy-one, two eighty-four, three twenty, three thirteen, three nineteen, and three oh-nine as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderwoman from the 19th, Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolution calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move that we accept the courtesy resolution.
Moved by Alderman from the 19th, entertain a second on that motion.
Nobody's interested.
Second by Alderman from the, second by Alderman from the 11th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 214, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyers, calling on the Ways and Means Committee to conduct hearings on the fiscal impact of the current earnings tax exemption for stock options and to issue a report.
Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number 214.
And Mr. President, as per you, your, our conversation before, I'd like the resolution read, please.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read resolution number 214.
Whereas the St. Louis City 1% earnings tax has been levied on city residents and workers since the late 1940s, and significant portion of the city's general revenue is derived from the earnings tax, some estimates have been as much as one-third of the city's annual budget, bringing in about three times what property taxes bring in, and twice the amount of what sales taxes bring in, and taxes fairly paid by everyone for the benefit of society at large are a part, are an important part of a democratic society. And whereas in November 2010, a Proposition A was passed in Missouri requiring the city of St. Louis and Kansas City, the only two cities in Missouri to have earnings taxes to have the voters in their cities reauthorize the city's earning tax every five, every five years. And whereas many of the city of St. Louis elected officials have supported the earnings tax as an important part of the city's budget and encouraged the voters of St. Louis to reauthorize the tax. And whereas over the years, St. Louis has become, has come up with some creative and some would say unfair way to exempt businesses and others from paying their fair share of the earnings taxes. These creative ways included reimbursing and/or diverting earnings tax, taxes to pay for office equipment and other unknown entities, using earnings taxes generated to pay for site developmental costs for several development projects, including the proposed geospatial intelligence agency site. And whereas, in another way to exempt certain people from paying their fair share of earnings tax, in September 2000, board bill 172 was introduced, and in December 2000, this Board of Aldermen passed board bill 172 exempting any income received by a person in the form of dividend, and any income received by a person in the form of or related to the grant vesting or exercise of stock options, performance shares, or performance, performance stock-based related incentive plans from the city's earnings tax. The board bill contained an emergency clause, and was signed into law by the then mayor of the city of St. Louis becoming ordinance 65094. And whereas, the ordinance was passed after Ralston Purina went to court to clear up the Missouri Supreme Court, and to, went to court to clear up the Missouri Supreme Court, and lost the argument that the city should not apply the earnings tax to stock options, which are generally given to top executives as a bonus. And whereas, board bill 172 was supported by the RCGA, who estimated that the exemption of dividends and stock options would cost the city only about $150,000, and said estimates were also repeated by several of the cosponsors in the press and on the floor of the Board of Aldermen as a reason to support the exemption. And where, and whereas, the RCGA's estimate of, of the cost to the city of St. Louis to exempt the dividends and stock options was based on what is now known to be several false assumptions and/or omissions of information. And whereas, on January 2000, on January the 24th, 2001, Dave Nicholas of the Post Dispatch reported that tops, that six top Ralston executives were going to cash in $118 million of stock options and restricted stock when the company was sold to Nestle. Nicholas reported that if board bill 172 had not been passed in December 2000, the city of St. Louis would have picked up the $1.77 million for just those six executives. And whereas, it is important to note that both St. Louis and Kansas City have earnings taxes, and that Kansas City does not have an exemption of their earnings tax on dividends and stock options. And whereas, for the last 16 years, the city has lost millions of dollars by giving up an earnings tax break to the top executives who make millions of dollars a year, while the minimum wage earner or middle management has to pay the 1% earnings tax on his or her wages, thus effectively taxing those who can least afford it while giving tax breaks to the wealthy. And whereas, as the city heads into an election in which the voters of the city must decide whether they should reauthorize the city's earnings tax, and the city officials are taking the position that at this time, the earnings tax is too important to the city's fiscal health for the voters not to reauthorize the earnings tax, and the city officials have not come up with a way to replace the revenue of earnings tax. It is important that the voters know that the city officials are taxing everyone fairly across the spectrum, spectrum of income wealth. And whereas, the best way we as members of the Board of Aldermen can assure the voters of the city that everyone is being taxed fairly is to make an inquiry to both the budget director and the assistant collector for the earnings tax in the office of the collector of revenue, as to the amount of revenue lost by the exemption, exemption of dividends and stock options. If that, if that amount is more than $350,000 that was reported to the board, it would cost then, it would cost then we should repeal ordinance 65094 immediately as it was passed on faulty and untrue financial data. And whereas, we as members of the Board of Aldermen can further assure the voters of the city that everyone is being taxed fairly, is to also make inquiries into the practice of allowing business, of businesses, of diverting their earnings tax requirements, to pay for office improvements and other unknown entities, and using earnings taxes generated to pay for site developmental costs for several development projects, and if the practice is found to be a tax exemption for wealthy while making the, while making the working people of our fair city pay the taxes, then this board should repeal all ordinance or laws that allow such an unfair burden of taxes on those who can least afford it. Now therefore bid resolved that the St. Louis Board of Aldermen direct Ways and Means Committee to convene a hearing for the purpose of examining, investigating, and gathering information regarding who pays earnings taxes, who does not pay earnings taxes, what revenue has been lost by the exemption of earnings taxes on dividends and stock options since 2000, and what revenue since 2000 has been lost by diverting earnings tax requirements to pay for office improvements and other unknown entities, and what revenue has been lost using earnings taxes generated to pay for site developmental costs for development projects, and to have the Ways and Means Committee produce a written fiscal report to be distributed to the members of the Board of Aldermen. Introduced on the 11th day of March 2016 by Honorable Sharon Tyers, Alderwoman of the first ward.
Alderwoman from the.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd ask that the resolution be sent to Ways and Means.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from first, entertain a second on that motion, second by Alderman from the 11th and the 12th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign resolution number 214 to Ways and Means.
So noted, that's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
With dispensal line, item 22, Miss Lance unfinished.
We have none.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the 28th, did you have, I was just told you, you had something.
Thank you. I don't have resolution 214 on my desk, I've looked all over for it, am I supposed to have?
It should be on everyone's desk. Mr. Clerk, could you check and see why resolution 214 was not on her desk? Miss Lance, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Friday, March 11th, following the meeting of the Board of Aldermen meeting, Executive Director of the St. Louis Developmental Corporation, Otis Williams, will be available to brief interested members of the Board of Aldermen on the details of the land offering to the federal government for the proposed NGA site in North St. Louis. The location of this briefing will be in the Kennedy Room. No meetings scheduled for next week, that's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to first remind everyone that the 98th Annual Dinner for Urban League is Monday, March 14th, there are still tickets available. The guest speaker will be the provocative, Dr. Michael Bastian, Bastian. And most of you all know that the Urban League has stepped up to the plate in this community the last few years with all the urgency that we have had, and they are serving this community well. If you have an opportunity, we'd like for you to support them with their annual dinner. We also have another project that is being done on Saturday, March 19th, it's called the Porch Light Project. And serving with a badge, they will serve that day, so that means, of course, police officers, who have volunteered their time on their own, not directed by St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, but have committed themselves on their own to work in North St. Louis and make sure that we illuminate those dimly lit porches, and make sure that we brighten those neighborhoods, and so they will have energy efficient light bulbs that they will distribute to residents in three neighborhoods. We will see that in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood, the Walnut Park neighborhood, and the Vandevander Place neighborhood will be serviced on Saturday, March 19th, from noon to 3:00 p.m. We ask anyone who likes to volunteer to meet at the Urban League office on Grand Ole Square, 3701, at 11 o'clock, and you will get instructions and supplies, and teams will be formed to go out and serve those communities. This project will be ongoing, so if you are interested, I think that Mr. Darryl Jones, who is sitting here, will be your contact person, and also, if you have some additional things that you can bring to the table to help your neighborhoods. Right now, we're all trying to figure out ways to make people feel comfortable with all of the crime that's going on, and also give youth an opportunity to volunteer in their communities. I also wanted to very quickly say, thank you again to Metro Theater for the play in Cassius Clay's Corner, 10,000 people saw the play, 7,000 were youth from all the schools all over the region. It was picked up from New York Times and on, with raving reviews, and people are now asking for it to be in other cities. So as we continue to move forward in the coming months, I hope that we all can also focus on jobs for youth, and I will be sending out a lot of information about different opportunities to all of the Aldermen, because we got to get as many young people employed for the summer as possible. Thank you.
All the one from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I will be in trouble if I don't, my special guest along with Mr. Betts is Joanne Williams, formerly of The Carpenters, but a longtime friend of mine, and a 21st Ward resident, but really a 20th Ward resident.
Alderwoman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I know I look a little green today, but I just want to encourage everyone to come to the downtown St. Patrick's Day Parade, very excited, this is the 100th year anniversary of the Easter Irish uprising, and I would like to let everyone know that I unfortunately will miss the 24th Ward Hibernian Parade for the first time since 1993, because I will be in Galway in their parade representing the city of St. Louis.
Oh, wow, congratulations. Alderman from the 17th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I wanted to, I know that many people have, several of us have had an interest in transportation issues, and in particular, how to get people from where they work, from where they live to where they work. And with that in mind, we, after 15 years, we are getting a new metro link stop between Sarah and Boyle, and that'll be going in next year, it's been a very long effort to get that. But the next item on the agenda is how to get people from the neighborhoods around it, both north and south, into the employment centers of Cortex and the Medical Center. So with that in mind, about a year ago, I requested that the institutions there commission a study on how people are getting there with the idea that we might be able to get them there without driving as much. And so, it's been a year in the making, and we've completed the study. We used Mark Johnston, who is a principal at Civitas, which is the urban planning firm that repurposed Staples Airport, and they've done their findings, we're beginning to share those with Metro and the Streets Department, but we're having our first public venting, vetting of those findings on April the 6th at the Urban Chestnut. And for those of you who are kind of transportation wonks, and would like to do, learn more about this, that'll be from 5:00 to 7:00, Mark Johnston will be in here. We have some fascinating findings, there's about 40,000 people that converge on the Cortex slash Wash U neighborhood each day, 30,000 during the daytime, 10,000 during the night, because it goes 24/7. And I think it's probably the highest number in the region, but 28% of them get there some other way than driving. And we think that with some changes in policy, we can really drive that number up. So that was item number one. And item number two, there's been a lot of discussion about earnings tax, I just want to point out that I put a letter on everyone's desk, it has an opinion about, a legal opinion from our staff upstairs, as well as some interesting, an interesting vote that was cast down here in the City Register, just wanted to bring those to your attention, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President.
Alderman from the 21st, I know they trapped you, but Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 14th be excused for necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from the 18th, entertain a second on that motion, second by Alderman from the 11th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Monday, April 18th, 2016, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 25th, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned. Stand adjourned.